January first, or January eighth, two thousand nineteen Town Council meeting. Roll call please.
Uh, Andy Schaefer.
Here.
Andy Key.
Here.
Trey Robby, uh, Roby.
Here.
Luke Gier.
Present.
Tyson Hacking.
Here.
Matt Belgrin.
Here.
Rich Garner.
Here.
Tyson, would you leave us in an invocation, please?
Director, kind heavenly Father, we're grateful for this day and we're grateful for the opportunity to serve the town of Rangelley. Heavenly Father, we ask thee to bless us that we can keep the town of Rangelley in mind when we're discussing and making decisions. We ask the heavenly Father to bless us that we can help those in need and we ask thee to bless those veterans that they can have thy spirit and also, uh, bless thee soldiers that fight for our freedoms. We're grateful for all that thou hast done and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Lisa, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item five, discussion and action to approve the minutes of the December two thousand eighteen meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the December eleventh meeting, minutes.
Motion's been made by Andy, second by Trey. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Petitions and public input. Absolutely.
All right, guys, um, wanted to give y'all an update. I sent y'all a little calendar that's got some of the, um, activities that are going out throughout the summer and I will get back to sending y'all calendar invites so they are on your calendar. Just accept them as tentative and they'll appear on your calendar. Um, BLM's given us a five-year permit, um, for the OHV rally, which means it only cost us, I think, a hundred and ten dollars a year now, um, to renew the permit. But I'll leave this with Lisa so that y'all will have a copy on file at the town level. Crabcrack is February ninth. We're down to about four tables. So, it's gonna be a ball. Uh, we have a DJ coming, so we'll be doing big band era music, the swing, you know, so practice your dance steps. Um, Thursday, I'm going to Denver and I'll be there. I'll be coming back on Sunday. I'm going to the International Sportsman Expo and I have a driver who's coming with me. So Matt's gonna bring me and he's gonna help me man the booth and work the show. I'm gonna be targeting certain people, um, certain companies. I'm gonna be giving away four vendor passes and four rider passes to help bring people in for the event. Uh, Business Over Breakfast is Thursday. It's gonna be at EEC. Um, and you're gonna enter on the east set of the doors. I'm not sure what side that is. I'm sure y'all do. So anyway, that's that. Um, the Resource Pantry is doing really well. We're up to sixty-four, uh, people that we're serving, or sixty-four families. So donations are gladly accepted. Uh, we do not just food, we do basic health and beauty aids, shampoo, razors, deodorant, uh, soap, things like that, things if they need that to help keep them clean and basic cleaning supplies as well. So you can drop them off here, the Chamber, and there's a couple other places in town. Call me and I'll come pick them up if you've got them. Oh, my Chamber membership is up to a hundred and forty-six companies. Just wanted y'all to know that. I'm really proud of that. And, um, CTO, I did get my matching grant from CTO. It was my first grant that I wrote, so I was really ecstatic. Um, it's almost a matching grant of twelve thousand dollars from the state with the tax lodging dollars. And that'll go to the billboard. Um, I will have Rail Real Estate in downtown Denver area on, um, public transportation, advertising our events. So getting our name out there. And then we'll be advertising in four other publications. Um, one of them is online. It's Outdoor Colorado. They have a great following already. So that's just gonna play into our outdoor, um, backyard. And I think that's it. Any questions?
Thanks, Connie.
You're welcome.
Anybody else like to address the council? Changes to the agenda? Is there any changes?
I did have one where I was chatting about the Gray and Black Marijuana Enforcement Grant that we received, but I'll talk about that in my update.
Okay. Um, we don't have any public hearings. Committee and board meetings. I don't think we've had anything since our last council meeting.
When is it at SAGNC meeting?
Uh, February, February.
Uh, do we have any reports from councils along with that?
I'll just jump in for a second on that. We've been doing some executive committee meetings for agency and one of the things that's come out is right now our DOLA, I don't know if I wanna call it a rep, but the DOLA person for this area is Carrie Hermanski. I didn't push her to that, but she's, she was Route County Commissioner and she was, uh, she lost her reelection bid and is, um, possibly going to be stepping down from her position on the DOLA Board. So you guys might kinda think about somebody that might be, uh, good for that position. They're the ones that review all the grants. They go through that process and grants for the areas, stuff like that. So just keep that in mind. Honestly, about that, if you have any ideas, let me know. I can't hear you. Sorry. So, yeah, if you guys have any names, just come forward or, you know, let me know and we'll, we'll see what we can do. What we can suggest.
What, what area does that representative cover?
Uh, I know Route County, Moffett County, Rio Blanco, and I believe Garfield is in there too. I, I don't know how they designate the regions, but I know those four counties are in there. That's all I have.
Anybody else? Uh, Supervisor's Report. Jocelyn?
So, uh, there's a few things that I was asked to update you on. The first is, uh, we are on a roll grant-wise in Rangelley between Connie uh, and me so far. On, uh, January second, we were notified that we received a DOLA administrative grant to, uh, fund half of the corrosion control study that we need to do at the water treatment plant. So we'll be moving forward with that as soon as I can get the, uh, contractor slash engineer to commit to a schedule. So we're pleased about that. That will obviously cut our costs in half. So that's good news. Um, the second thing that I wanted to talk to you about is, uh, the water rights work we were working on that I updated you on at the last meeting. We were notified on New Year's Day, of all strange dates, that we were successful in our application to the Water Court. We, uh, have retained all of our conditional rights that we were working, uh, towards justifying. And, uh, but that came with a caveat and they're basically saying there's much more scrutiny being applied to conditional rights and we really need to show progress in the next six years before we have to prove our diligence again on a six-year cycle that we are taking steps to divert that water and put it to beneficial use. So, um, you know, we have several ideas on ways we can move forward with that. And I, I don't know if it's something that perhaps we should have a work session with or how you folks want to proceed with that. But I'm firmly convinced, based on the process that we just completed, that if we do not show, you know, concrete steps towards beneficial use of those rights, we will probably lose them in the next diligence, uh, period. So, um, Dawn and Lisa and I have been talking about how to move forward with it. Uh, please let me know how you folks wanna be involved and, um, you know, we'll be sure, I'm sure, coming to you with suggestions and things that we've come up with, uh, to make sure that we can show we're making progress in that regard.
Jocelyn, I think that's a very big deal that you guys got that moved forward for another six years.
Yeah, we were pleased.
Good work. Good job.
Jocelyn worked very, very hard and spent many, many hours on that, so I agree with you.
Yeah, with the water rights these days, I think that's a very important thing for the town of Rangelley. Yes, it is.
Thank you. Um, along those lines, um, our water rights attorney recommended that we start participating in the Yampa White Green Roundtable. And so I'm going to, um, the first meeting for me will be in Craig tomorrow evening and I'm gonna go to that. And at some point, we should talk about how the town of Rangelley is represented on that basin. Right now, we have, um, a municipal representative and it's Alden and he's not really, you know, a municipal rep anymore. He's the Water Conservation District. So at some point, we should talk about how the town wants to move forward with representation on that board. I think it's gonna be very important in the future.
Especially since they have two from the Water Users Association on there, exactly ten members on the board as well. So I think we should have someone.
Yeah, Alden, you know, when he was the Water and Utility Superintendent, he was a municipal representative and he retained his position on that roundtable even when he moved into his other role. So we should talk about that at some point. I'm very interested in participating in it, so. Uh, the last thing I wanted to talk to you folks about, this is just informational and there is, uh, information in your packet about it, but um, the USGS long-term monitoring work that's, uh, being done on the White River. Um, I put in a map showing all of the monitoring locations and, and this is separate. So the USGS has gauges, you know, on rivers and creeks all across the state and the country that measure flow and, and very basic, uh, water characteristics. But in specific locations, they do long-term monitoring of, of basic wa- water quality parameters, salinity, chloride, alkalinity, pH, things like that. And, uh, so the packet information I provided shows you where they are monitoring, what they are monitoring. And then I provided, uh, information on who pays for the operation of those monitoring locations, et cetera. And, um, i- if you're interested, on the page that has, um, all the numbers, it gives you a breakdown of how much Rio Blanco County, Town of Meeker, Meeker Sand, Town of Rangelley, the River District, et cetera, pay for. And, you know, out of a uh, forty-seven thousand dollar a year program, the town of Rangelley has been participating at about forty-four hundred dollar level. Uh, so we pay a small percentage of that and for that investment, we, uh, have the understanding that this long-term monitoring data will be available. And I just want you folks to know, in two thousand ten or eleven, when, uh, SGM was hired to do the assessment of the water treatment plant before all the upgrades were done, they used that data, uh, massively to figure out what treatment processes were going to be needed to treat, uh, the water, which comes from the White River, obviously. And so instead of having to embark on their own or our own, uh, sampling program, we were able to go into the, uh, public domain website that USGS maintains and extract all that data. And I, I still have it on my computer. It's a spreadsheet with, you know, probably a thousand rows and it goes out to like triple EE columns. And we were able to perform statistical analysis on that data and get information on, you know, salinity and alkalinity and total organic compounds, et cetera, to, to give the engineers a really good feel for what treatment processes would be needed. And if we hadn't had that data, we probably would've had to spend thousands of dollars developing that ourselves. So I know in the past, there have been questions about why we contribute to that. And I, I just wanna let you know that I find that data very useful and it has saved the town, you know, significant quantities of money in the past. So I, I think it's a very worthwhile, um, uh, thing to continue contributing to. So, uh, the numbers are all in your packet if, if you're interested and wanna review it and, um, that is pretty much all I had. Was there anything else you wanted me to cover, Lisa? Okay. Any questions, folks?
How did your meeting go with the BLM when they came up Texas Beach?
I, I think it went really well, Andy. Um, it was interesting. We spent pretty much the whole day in the field. I had Ken Parsons come join me because I feel like Ken has a really good working knowledge of the river. And I, I didn't realize, you know, not having the history, that Ken had been a former county commissioner, so, you know, he was really able to speak to history and things that have gone on, on in the past and, and that was really helpful. So we went to all three locations. We looked at, you know, what benefit they would have for river access from the road to the river. And, you know, BLM explained why they were proposing closing it to motorized access. And they're not proposing closing Texas Beach. The Hardaway, um, tract is further west from Texas Beach. So, so Texas Beach is safe. Um, and it, you know, unfortunately, I wanted to disagree with them and I wanted to, you know, not accept their logic. But they were fairly compelling in, in what they had to say. And the one really, or several really good things that came out of it is, you know, I mentioned the fact that, uh, when we've had stakeholder meetings and people, uh, who live here talking about, you know, what will happen as we develop recreational opportunities, river use, trail use, et cetera, in the area. And people have said they're concerned about river users just trespassing because, and, and not having respect for land ownership. And I pointed out to the BLM folks, you know, if I'm on the river, I have no idea that this is a public lands parcel that I can pull over and have lunch or, you know, do whatever I want here from, from the river. And, you know, Kent Walter sort of had an epiphany and said, wow, you know, our signage is terrible. Nobody knows where public lands begin and end on the river. And he committed to this spring, launching a massive effort, um, from the headwaters to the border and then working with the Utah, um, equivalent to continue on down the river to mark entering public lands, leaving public lands at all of the BLM parcels along the river so that users will know when they're allowed to get out and picnic or do whatever. And, you know, hopefully we could get Kent to update the river map, et cetera, showing fairly clearly where public lands are so that people will know, I don't need to get out here and trespass because in five hundred feet, there'll be, you know, a half mile of river frontage where I can do whatever it is that I wanna, want to do. So, uh, Kent committed to, um, marking public lands on all the parcels. Uh, he also committed to better maintenance of the Big Trujillo site and several sites that are near Big Trujillo 'cause they were terribly rutted from people using them during mud season, basically. Um, he's talking about, you know, trying to get some inter-agency and inter-governmental MOUs going with the county to assist in that maintenance. Um, and, you know, to me, the, the best takeaway was, uh, we listened to each other. No one, you know, was so dyed-in-the-wool, decided on their position that they weren't listening, willing to listen or compromise. And unfortunately, I had to sort of agree that the tracks that they do want to close, to me, didn't really have that much value. And I kept saying, Kent, you leave just a one-car width swath to the river so I can back in with my raft and put it in? And they said, you know, they pointed out the physical attributes of the site and said, where are you gonna do that? And, you know, in many cases, the sites were, you know, very steep drop-off into the river. So unless we're willing to actually build a boat ramp, um, you can walk there, you can take a fishing pole there, you can scramble down and access it. But several of those sites did not make sense for vehicle access and I didn't really disagree with that. So, you know, we've, we've talked about sites that the town has a long-term interest in developing river access to. Uh, I pointed out possibly some recreation district property where we might do the same. And, uh, some existing BLM parcels where, uh, road access may not be that useful to people motorized. I mean, you can certainly park at the top and walk in with your fishing pole if you want. Still, um, and, and so I think, I think it was useful. I think it opened up a really good dialogue. And, you know, again, as this process continues moving forward, if any of you have really strong opinions on any of this, you know, there are opportunities to comment and I really felt like they were listening. I mean, they, they brought the entire Meeker office up to meet with us and talk about these things. So I, I thought it was good.
Can we possibly at some point, if they're gonna continue considering this scheduled meeting where he actually himself comes up here and explains that to the public? Because I know you feel that they should, you might feel that way now, but, uh, ultimately, that's up to the public. Like, that's, it's their land. It's not the BLM's, it's not Kent Walter's. It's, it's, it's ours.
You bet.
And it, if they wanna come to us and, and have a discussion, I think we need to do that. Um,
Do you mean to council or have another public?
I mean, like a public forum where they just come to town at seven o'clock at night and people from the community can come and, and sit down with them and say, what's going on? What do you wanna shut down? Why? Explain it to us. Um, I, I mean, like a, a community meeting of some sort. Like, I understand they're government employees and probably don't like coming out in the evenings, but this is a community that works. So for people to get fair input, I think that's something we, we should do with them.
I agree. I mean, I, I think they're furloughed or many of them are furloughed right now, so it's not a, an option until the government is, you know, working again. Um, in their defense, Andy, they did hold, um, at least one public meeting and, and maybe two here at the beginning of the process. And it's a really complicated process. It took me a long time to understand it and how it was gonna work. What they told me is it, it's kind of a, a two-tiered system. Right now, they're looking at the overall resource management plan and then they're gonna do a route-by-route decision-making process based on, you know, the, the document they published where they identified every single existing route in the county. And I have a copy of that in my office. It, it can be available at Town Hall at any time. And, you know, once they've picked this preferred alternative, which kinda sets big overall guidelines, then they're gonna go through and do a route-by-route. And I'm pretty sure they plan on doing lots of public meetings on that, but we can certainly make a specific request that they come up here when they're talking about the routes that are near, dear to us.
Yeah, that would be great. I think that's important.
Yeah. I, I think they'll be willing to do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Jocelyn.
You bet.
Janet?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm just gonna give kind of an update on, uh, my report. So for White River Village, the rehab of apartment twenty-two is complete and the tenant has moved in. Uh, we now have a vacancy in apartment twenty-one. So, um, this apartment will be not a complete rehab, but almost a complete rehab. Uh, the anticipated completion of this will be probably second week of February, barring any unforeseen issues with it. Um, one of my new job duties is management of White River Vili- White, White River Village. I'm very familiar with all of the tenants there, so it's been a pretty natural transition for me. Um, in December, one recertification was processed and submitted to the USDA as well as the ongoing maintenance issues and, um, cleaning. Just a little fun side note, you know, all of us are kinda going through our offices, cleaning and reorganizing as we transition into our new positions. And I found a really cool old binder full of pictures from old, um, senior picnics and cool, um, pictures from White River Village and took it down to the tenants down there and they're sitting reminiscing and looking through all the old pictures. So that's kind of a fun side note. Um, liquor licensing update. On January first, starting on January first, consumers will now have the option to purchase full-strength beer at grocery and convenience stores in Colorado. I don't know if you guys were aware. Um, so right now, there's no new license, licensing requirements. Uh, licensees, licensees with fermented malt beverage licenses will keep the same license and then, um, on their new, wh- when they do their renewals, they'll receive their new license. But if they're changing anything about their space, like adding spaces or anything like that, they need to do a modification of premises. Um, and then in December, there was one renewal of a liquor license completed for Nichols Store. Uh, Main Street update. I'm currently working on preparations for next season's flowers. Um, the process consists of designs of the pots and then choosing varieties and colors of flowers that will be used. Uh, I've used basically the same design for the past three use, three years. We just kinda changed the, the colors. Uh, two bids are requested as early in January as possible in order to get the plant material ordered so that they can start the plants. Uh, I anticipating having the plant material, material ordered by the end of January, first week of February. And we usually plant in April sometime. And then on code enforcement, we've put most of all of the active files into inactive for now because of the weather. And then we'll just revisit all of them in the spring when it warms up. Any questions? Nope.
Thanks, Janet.
Thanks.
Lisa?
Well, I'll go ahead and talk about the Gray and Black Marijuana Grant first. So my understanding of this grant, they have a pot of money and depending on how many municipalities or cities apply for it, that depends on the amount of the grant that you get. So they were, they even extended it a month because they didn't have a lot of applications for it. So basically, you apply for it and get the whole money. And I did tie, to tie specifically just because of our dog to make sure that he could use it. He said he will use it no matter what we get, he will use it. So, um, we apply for it, get the money and, and he can stick it to you. So. Um, and that is an annual thing. It's very simple. You just go in and say, we want the money. And I think this comes from probably marijuana sales. That's part of their ongoing effort to help fund, you know, law enforcement of illegal.
Placing the label.
Um, I did send out to all of you that we're, um, kind of bringing dispatch over on Monday through Wednesday to the county. We had a few bumps in the road, but I think they've worked those out. And it seems to be transitioning pretty good. That gives our three dispatchers a little time off and not as much overtime for the town. So, and we do have probably two or three applicants that Mercy is working on, um, going through some testing. So we hope we'll be able to hire a couple dispatchers soon. Um, we have a couple of employees that are out on personal injuries or illnesses. Um, Michael Dillon over Christmas fell and hurt his knee fairly severely. So he is recuperating, but we're giving him some administrative stuff at home. And when he can do light duty, he will probably be doing things in the office. He does a lot of our GIS and computer things, but he will not be back to full work duty for probably six, eight weeks. Another employee will be out for a personal illness for probably two weeks. And so we're just working everybody to help fill in where we can with those absences. Um, Julie Drake with the county would like to come back and talk about vaping next time again. She really would like us to amend our municipal code, I think, to restrict where that can be done and under a, under age usage, but I'll let her make that presentation and I'll try and get. She gives me a wealth of materials and I'll try and get those out to you ahead of time because there's a lot of information that she would like to present. So I was just kinda giving you the heads up on that. Um, our two vehicles were, are almost repaired at, um, Rangelley Collision. Of course, we'll just pay our deductibles. So that'll just be about a five thousand dollar repair for us. I'm going to try and attend the CCMA, um, annual meeting in Glenwood and I can, um, actually apply for a grant to help fund that. So since I'm a first-time town manager, I think I have good chances of getting that hall paid for, I hope. Mark Aiken, the Grand Junction City Manager, I don't know if you guys spoke with him at all during the, um, town manager search, but he was the manager for about sixteen years in Grand Junction. Junction. He has offered to kind of help be my mentor, and I take him up on that, so I'll reach out to him sometimes if I have any bumps in the road that I want some advice on. So that's going to happen February 6th to the 8th, and since it's in Glenwood, I think that's a great opportunity. And they're also having, the very first day is just for first-time town managers, so I think that'll be a great learning experience for me. The county is going to have a couple of meetings, kind of like our community networking, but they're going to have them twice a year in Meker. The first one is Monday, February 11th, and it's just for all different agencies and special districts to get together and, I think, kind of do the same thing that we do at our community networking meeting, but do it county-wide. Of course, anybody on the board is welcome to attend as well, but I will try and attend those, too. I think it's just to try and get a, you know, good understanding of what everyone is going through in the county, and see if there's any ways that we can network and help each other out. So I'll make sure and forward that email to everyone.
Okay, cool.
Go back to this. I think that's kind of all that I have right now. Do you guys have any questions or any requests of things that you'd like me to work on? Kind of putting our board retreat on the back burner. I'd like to get you guys some more information about our finances and some ideas, and maybe our comprehensive plan to look at. It's a big, old, big thing, just so you have some background, because I think that's important to look back at where we were before we looked forward. So I'd like us to be really prepared for that before we jump into that, if you all agree with that. Any other questions?
You said, Ty thought we could use the grant for, or the dog. But how is that, if it's black and gray market marijuana?
Well, he can use it. What I understood from talking to them, he can use it for training for him to utilize searching out.
Because as I was gonna say, our dog's not trained in marijuana, isn't he?
I think, because Ty's an expert in drug.
Right.
So the dog has nothing to do with it? Okay.
I'm just saying, he says he can utilize it.
Used for training for interdiction and detection.
Okay.
Any other questions for Lisa? Thanks, Lisa. We don't have anything on our old business, new business. Item A, discussion and action to approve the special event permit for the Rangelie Area Chamber of Commerce crabcrack on February 9th, 2019.
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit. Here we crabcrack.
Second.
Motion is made by Trey, second by Rich. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, discussion and action to approve the liquor license modification of premise application for loaf and jug.
So with the change in the liquor laws, loaf and jug has applied to, it's a modification of premises, and basically, they're increasing their space for the selling of the full-strength beer, because they anticipate more consumers will be purchasing. So I think we included in your packet kind of the drawings that they sent us. So currently, they have one beer cooler, and they're increasing it to four. And then they're also adding an eight-foot beer case. Looks like a standalone beer case. If you look on the other two, you can see the eight-foot beer case here. And they have a representative here, if you have questions for her also.
I'm a little concerned that by increasing those sales, it's going to take away from our local liquor stores' revenues. So is there any, I don't know what my question is.
They have the right to sell if you can't stop.
I'm not, I'm not saying they can't sell it.
There's a lot of people that are.
But if it was our inclination to say, hey, we don't want you to have more space to sell it, you already have space to sell beer, sell it out of that space. We don't have, do we have to, is there anything that says that we have to grant more space? Or this is up to us?
You know, I don't know the answer to that question. Obviously, I just took over with liquor licensing, and this is a totally new thing across the entire state that communities are dealing with. So I would need to consult somebody from the state for the answer to that question, because I don't know.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
It's new territory.
I can see it being like, not as much of a big deal in metropolitan areas, where there's multiple liquor stores and multiple places where you can go buy, I mean, like, go to California, you can get full-strength beer anyplace, but I'm a little concerned that it's going to take away from the revenues of our local.
And this may be increasing it, but this is also just reorganization.
There's a lot, that looks like a lot more volume.
Well, no, I'm just saying that if they just move something around, you can apply for a change of premise.
I get that.
So the loaf and jug already had a liquor license, right? And was already selling the other beer?
And that's what I talked about, the 3.2 licensees, those will just change to the full-strength beer as of January 1st. And then when they renew their licenses, as the year progresses, they'll receive their new, they've changed the entire definition of the FNB. It's anything, it's full strength, there's no, basically, there will be no more 3.2.
I guess I'm kind of in line with Luke to some degree. Is there any kind of guidance that we have or control that we have over how much can be expanded? Or is that part of the licensing process, where, you know, they've asked for more space to, you know, put beer on sale? I don't understand. I mean, so they're expanding their beer in, I mean, does the state require them to, is there any other licensing requirements? I know you said you didn't know about that, but.
There's no more licensing.
For the amount of volume?
For them to sell the full-strength beer. Now, anytime, any licensee does any kind of modification as far as moving their storage or shelving, they need to do a modification of premises. So as far as increasing shelf space, I would need to refer to the state.
Okay. I was just wondering if the volume that they sell is, has anything tied in with their approved permit? Doesn't?
I believe, I believe that the answer to that is no.
Okay.
I don't believe under the liquor code that, that has no impact. The only reason why they want notification is so when you're changing things around, that the public entities understand that you're either expanding or contracting.
Right. Because when you first apply for your initial liquor licensing, you have to draw, you know, you have to have this drawn out, so that it's part of the file, so that the state and also the local licensing authority is aware of how you're set up.
Where at, how much?
Right.
How much you have stored.
I mean, for me, that's.
This is all part of the statute.
Yeah, I was gonna say, this is decided at the state level. I don't think we should be getting in the mud on what we want to do with who and what they put up. I mean, we're here to approve or disapprove of the liquor license, and this is a free, like, capitalistic country. We might not like it. It does impact our local businesses, but I don't think we, as a government entity, should be impeding on that locally. I mean, if I want to, if I, I mean, I'll be honest, I feel the same way you do, but I'll just do my part and buy it from the liquor stores, not the.
Absolutely.
The convenience stores, I mean, that's, that's how it works. I don't, I don't see any reason why we should impede on what they want to do.
And I think we'll probably have the come-and-go and the other three points, two come in and do the exact same thing in short time.
So, having said that, I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license modification of premise application for loaf and jug.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Andy, second by Rich. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Luke opposed it?
Yes, sir.
Item C, discussion and action to approve the December 2018 check registry.
I'll make a motion to approve the December 2018 check registry.
Second. Motion was made by Tyson, second by Luke. Is that right?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, discussion and action to approve the November 2018 financial summary.
I'll make a motion to approve the November financial summary.
Second.
Motion made by Andy, second by Rich. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We got, Dallas, did you want to talk to the council? All right. Thanks for coming. Thanks for what you've been doing for town.
Hey, man, don't be a, don't be a shy flower back there. Say something.
We appreciate what you've been doing for us.
We do thank you, Dallas. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Same board vacancies, scheduled announcements are there. It was nice to have Connie here once again to give us a quick update. Ladies, do you have anything for us?
One more thing I forgot.
Clerk and treasurer?
There's a White River Water Expo on January 17th, and it's at the Fairfield Center in Meker. I'll give you guys these flyers, so you know what it is. They have some good speakers about water.
Did you need signatures from any of the council before they leave tonight?
I do. So don't run out of people that aren't a signature.
Okay.
Please be, how about you?
We'll show adjourned at 7:43. Thank you.